All right, I'd like to call the December 20th Select Board Meeting to order at 6:32 PM.
Do you know your order in the back there?
Any changes to the agenda?
I have what?
Yes, sir.
I just can't speak.
Seven, so, 8C?
8C.
Okay, Timsen Hill Preschool, take the P out of Timsen, T-I-M-S-O-N.
It's not there? Huh. Going, did someone take all the water?
No, I ate too many nuts.
Any other? Okay, no other changes to the agenda at this time. Right now, I'd like us to take a look at the special budget meeting on November 21st. We need to approve those minutes. And that was the special meeting for... What's our discussion?
Good to see Peter's back, oh, Peter.
Hello?
Didn't say hi to you last night.
Well, who's what going on?
Hey, I'd like, anybody make a motion to accept the minutes from the special meeting from November 21st?
I make a motion to accept the special meeting minutes for November 21st.
Can I have the second? Second, you're raising your hand now, Chris. Second, for Chris, any discussion? Okay, here and then, all those in favor of accepting the minutes from the special meeting on November 21st, they saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then we get to look at the thesis, I mean, the minutes.
That was... We've got a shot.
That's all right, I would say, I'm gonna say it for my own heart. Of the December 6 minutes.
Would you like them shorter?
No.
No?
Yes. Yes.
I think the detail is good.
I think the detail is good. I had a couple changes on page one.
Oh, yeah, we should go page by page.
Just go page by page, yeah. So, on, under actions, the first one held a, the, if we could just take out the "the", so it just says, "held a drawing for the winner of the quilt raffle".
Oh, good.
And then has a period at the end of it? After raffle? And then appointed Jordah Chapin, we now want to revise Jordah's last name to what?
Dano.
Okay. Oh, sorry, it's the very first line, first sentence, under actions. Very, very first page of...
Oh, it's in the action, is that?
In the action, sorry, yeah. Just take out the first "the" and then put a period after raffle.
I have one?
Yes, sir.
And, yeah, Leanne Parker's, the spelling of Leanne Parker's name under numbers, you maybe have already got that, because we were talking about it before.
L-E-E?
L-E-E. A-N-N-E.
A-N-N-E, okay. Anything else on page one?
Nope.
Page two?
There's two Leanne Parkers on that page.
We have, got all the Leanne Parkers. You got all those up here, Chris? I didn't have anything on page two.
I do.
Yes, what's on page?
On the first paragraph where it says, "she can put apply for mileage reimbursement", last line.
Oh.
It should put, "she can put in" or "she can apply for", one or the other.
Good.
Rather than the force remover?
Sorry, is that a... No, that's okay.
Oh, nothing on page two?
Nothing on page two, okay. No, go with that, though.
Page three.
I guess my goodness, it stopped. It was on page two.
She can put, oh.
Yeah, I got that.
Okay.
Yep, okay.
Anything else?
Yes, on the second one is stated stating. Mary Meyer's company stating that future donations, or, because you've got stated stating, so...
Good, good, I. And I guess while you're there, the company as well is Mary Meyer, singular, not Mary Myers.
Right.
And it's M-E-Y-E-R. Oh, good.
M-E-Y-E-R.
M-E-Y-E-R.
Got it.
No answer.
Anything else on page three?
I guess the only thing I would add on page three is, at the end of that, right before summary update reports, it says, the very last line says, "there was discussion, Mr. Jones will make these calls", I would rather that say, "Mr. Jones will call Mr. Wellman", I never said I would call everyone else, I just said I would call Doug.
That's right.
Got it?
Page four?
What he stands on.
Under the quilt, the two references to Deb Feiner, it should be F-E-I-N-E-R.
Forty minutes, too freaky.
F-E-I-N-E-R. F-E-I-N-E-R. Both of those places, and then. And then I guess, if you've already changed Jordah Chapin's...
Got it.
Okay.
Page five?
Five.
I have nothing.
Yes, sir.
You couldn't have been down stalking him.
Page, page six?
Nothing for me.
Page seven?
We pressed on, the movement is just blowing me out of here.
Nope.
Page nine?
Okay.
Page ten? Page eleven?
You're good, Doug, I'm listening.
Okay. All right, I'll let back to you, you did a motion to accept the minutes as corrected from someone?
Yep, I move that we accept the minutes of December 6th, as amended.
As amended by, so good. What's her name, Chris?
I'm gonna let where it's freaking split right out.
Accepting December 6 minutes as corrected, significantly saying aye. Aye opposed? Excellent, thank you so much.
That was a lot of detail in it, it was really good.
Okay, there's no scheduled members of the public, and there are no unscheduled members of the public at this time.
Sweet.
Next, we're gonna go to Mr. Tanza for a town clerk report.
Well, as you all know, we had a horrific accident and fire this weekend in town. And it's been busy in the office, people have been calling, and we've been following with Gary LaVonia, who's been keeping us updated, and there is a family fund, a cuts family fund, which is, all that information is on the website, those wishing to donate can certainly go to the website and get that information. And our prayers are with the cuts who are going through a very traumatic time.
After he's done with his town clerk thing, oh, Doug Young.
You know, at this point, there are some things that we can do in town for the cuts, and it's gonna be, we'll have to have a meeting, and basically, abate taxes and so forth for the property, because the property is unusable, so they don't have use of the property. The, I'm still waiting to get the correct language. Basically, as the chairman of the Board of Abatement, I can call a meeting at any time, but I just want to make sure that the person who's asking for the abatement doesn't have to come from the people who own the property, or can someone else do it? And I need to get an exact thing for that. But I'm looking at, and I discussed it with the listers, I discussed it with the treasurer, Samara, our treasurer, and they're all on board, and again, we don't make decisions, it's a board decision, but it's the least we can do, I think, for the families going through a very difficult time. And I guess that's it, basically, we're doing the digitalization of the land records, and I'm preparing records for the end of the year, we have the dog records, the taxes. I'm disappointed that I don't have my delinquent taxes totally done, but it's in a bankruptcy, and no matter what I do, no matter how I push, I have to be very careful, because there's laws that keep us from doing anything. So that's still in the wind. It looks like the sale's gonna go through with the Pinnacle Association, but I don't have any paperwork to support that yet.
I have a question to that, so, how, are there any recent people, who've been to town, any recent closings? Do you residence?
Ducharme's, right?
No, we had, say it again?
Ducharme's house, it's sold, isn't it?
That was two months ago.
Yeah, that was last... No, we, basically, we've had some deeds switches, some mortgages, but in, no actual transfers of deeds this last two weeks.
Okay, there we go.
Excuse me.
Bruce, you gonna add a little bit more information about this?
Yeah, God pretty much summed it up a lot, and I was gonna ask about the abatement of the taxes, but I went and talked and had a chat with Todd Law yesterday to decide what we can do going forward, I had ideas in my mind. I haven't called Lori mine yet, but she's on the same wavelength that I am. And that's it, just a little after the first of the year, we're talking about having a meeting somewhere, probably New Brook, because it's too big for here. Inviting the community to come to this meeting, to develop a committee to help these people, because the way it looks right now is, they're gonna, they're gonna probably need around $100,000. That's my guess. Just the airlifting for the two people, seventeen five apiece. Plus, unfortunately, they're gonna bear, seventeen five apiece.
They have insurance?
They have insurance, but I don't think they have insurance on that. They have, they have health insurance, but I don't believe they have insurance on the airlifting. I don't think that's part of it, and it covers, I know, if I've ever heard of, really some names.
I think it is.
Yeah, it does, because...
You do?
Yeah.
Well, hopefully, that's the case, I love to be wrong.
Most medical insurance companies will do it, because it was medically necessary, and it was life threatening, yes.
Praise God, I hope I'm wrong.
Mostly.
I love to be wrong. They do have insurance, I don't know the extent of, or what their insurance is. He must be on Medicare, Medicare, because he's 70, she's 63. As of yesterday, I hadn't talked to Todd任by down at West River Transportation today, but as of yesterday, Bruce had been pretty much fighting for his life. His kidneys weren't failing, and they're really, they're really fighting it. He's expected to have about three months' worth of skin grafting and recovery for that. I won't go into all the specifics of that, we can talk about it another time, but basically, the important things that you all want to know is, we're starting, we're trying to develop a committee after the first half of the holidays, the first year, it's gonna be publicly announced, like I said, probably in New Brook, to develop a formulation, so you don't have 20 people going in 20 different areas, and invite the cuts family, so they can be involved. Like Guy said, Burgundy opened up the account yesterday, and there's already money going into it. The daughter-in-law, her name, Alicia?
I don't, I don't know.
Brad's wife, I believe is the name, Alicia, she had, the day after, had 100 phone calls. So, everybody is on for this. So, anyway, so you're gonna see, what I wanted to ask the board was, permission to use the addition in the church for donations for clothes? Todd's in the process, Todd Law is in the process of getting information as to their sizes.
Sizes and stuff?
Because they have a clothing, they have nothing. It was brought right to the ground.
I think those are the things that you have to wait to see, is for...
Yes, we are, yes, we are, we're just setting up the preliminaries, and doing this in conjunction with the cuts family.
Right.
But if that's the case, right, I offered the church, I said I had to clip with all you guys, to have donations there, and I or somebody else could be there like one hour a day, a couple of days a week, or something like that, and accept the donations, which will also be good, not to get too far into the weeds, to not be too duplicitous as far as what they need, but be more concerned.
Money is better, I think, people would go with mine.
Right, so, just in that standpoint, that's just one small instance. So, like I said, if there's anybody, I sent an email yesterday, if anybody had any ideas to bring to the Select Board meeting, they got any ideas, or thoughts as to what you think should happen, we're all open to it. But right now, it looks as though we're gonna formulate this event, it's a, well, bad way to put it, get together, more, better, I guess, somewhere after the first of the year, and start developing this committee, because the way it looks, it's gonna be a couple of year thing, if these people are, these people are hurting. So, if anyone has any questions about their condition, stop calling me, I'll, later.
I think with the idea of doing a tax abatement, if there needs to come to a vote, you know, just let us know, put it on an agenda, or however we need to...
As soon as I get the language, the proper language, and I want to do it after the first of the year, because the first payment isn't due until February 15th, so we have time to get it together, and basically, it's the treasurer, the listers, justice of the peace, the select board, and myself as the town clerk. That's the body of the Board of Abatement. And there is a certain criteria that we have to, there's five levels of criteria, and he certainly fits in one of them, so, I don't see any problem, but I just want to make sure I get the right language from the VLC.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about anything I said?
Not just that, you know, right now, money is what they could use, and there's a fund set up at the Future Bank, and that would be the appropriate way to, at any time, do something as the spring, summer goes on.
Right, because we're talking about funding thing, funding events and stuff like that, so this is where this is going. Okay.
Town meeting, all I have to say is that the town plan, excuse me, the town plan during, was, happened last week. The plan is posted online, and the agenda for January 17th will include a vote for the, from the Select Board to approve the town plan on January 17th. It has been posted in the newspaper on Saturday past.
Okay.
It's a regular meeting, that's all I had to say about that. David, cans and bottles?
Just very quickly, so I had a conversation with the folks at the Putney Road Redemption, who had reached out to Guy at one point, and they hadn't really had any conversations with anybody from the meeting house. Subsequently, I think they left some messages for people, but nobody called them back. The bottom line is, I don't think we, even by their own addition, there's probably not enough volume coming from us to make it worth their while to have one of their people coming up here and collecting things, and having some kind of collection spot. But they certainly are happy to set up a structure where either, if we decided down the road, we wanted to set up a place to collect redeemables, and take them there, we can get some amount of the money going directly to a charity if we want, or back to the town if we want, or whatever, there's a bunch of different options, and they certainly want to be supportive and helpful with that. I think it's kind of something that until we get to the spring, isn't really even worth thinking about. We'd have to figure out where we would put it, it would have to probably be a little bit of a, maybe something like what New Brook has, of a little shed with a place that's kind of secure. He gave me some ideas of what kind of volume we might potentially end up having, based on the volume, based on like the size of our town, but, you know, we wouldn't know until we tried it. But anyway, that's something to maybe think about for the spring, is if, would we really want to be in the business of collecting cans and bottles, and having some structure for hauling them to Brattleboro once a week, or a couple of times a month, or something? We could make some, you know, we could generate some money off of it, but more importantly, we could divert potentially a bunch of stuff from the bins, which is costing us five pounds to be removed, so, anyway, we'll talk about it as we get closer.
All right, very good, thanks for keeping us up on that, we do appreciate it. All right, moving along to highways and roads, and current projects and plans, Mr. Bill?
With your team on us, so, a lot of bigger projects are painted at whole. However, the line painting did take place, and stuck to the road, and I feel that it, it looks good.
Yeah, I agree, it looks nice.
Did an excellent job.
The guy seemed like a super nice guy, gave him the, showed him the areas to be painted. He was, I questioned him about the paint sticking, and he said he's actually painted down into the single-digit numbers, the weather degree, and it's an oil-based paint, so I guess that it really adheres nice. And even after one plowing, seems like it's hanging on pretty good. He was leaving our town to do the town of Dumersham, had a section that faded ground, and then one other town, so he was doing three towns that night. And I guess he travels to Maine, and Northern New York, and has a good reputation. And I guess that was the reason that he came to our town so late, was because he was in Maine, and spends months up there, lives there, and then brings the truck home. He's out of Athol, Massachusetts. So, our sand shed finally got filled. I believe it was 224 yards, it was delivered.
It'd be nice if they put some sand to the road.
Sold, pushed up.
Can I make a point here? I just speak to Archie about that, you know, we had asked that there be a delivery ticket, and it was delivered to Town Hall. If another delivery ticket comes in, Guy, Archie would like to be emailed or called with a message that he can tell Mark to go inspect it.
Okay.
Same thing with Cargill, they haven't made their salt delivery, but when they do, they're gonna email me their delivery ticket, and then I'll email it to Archie, and he'll tell you to go check the quality of the salt.
How, how long ago have you made contact with Cargill?
I called them the same, after the last board meeting, right away.
Because I was deep in touch with Archie, and he asked me to make an order for salt delivery.
I didn't make an order for, so you...
I had made the call, and we should have, the load, I think, probably came today, I didn't go up and look. But I called Barrett, Barrett Trucking, and I can give you that number. And I asked for a trailer load this time, Archie said we could, a trailer load, which is like 36 tons.
Wow.
So, it would be, it should fill the bay.
See, I spoke with Amanda at Cargill in Ohio, and she was gonna talk to their vendors, and said, and then she called back and said, "they'll just email me, and I can forward it to Archie when there is a delivery, so that he'll know that there's, it's in there."
All right, occasionally, they do leave the...
I told them, that blows away.
Flip in the door, yeah, I don't think I've ever gotten all of them, but...
Right.
Yeah, I've got some of them. So, we were, if it's not there, should be there by tomorrow, it's very late. I did talk to Carr Tree Service, Henry Carr, and told him that he got the job of taking down our trees, and he asked if he could get something on paper stating that he was awarded the job.
I did fill out the paperwork that Samara gave me for Mr. Carr, and signed off on the contract, and she was going to send it off to him last week.
All right, so maybe he's gotten that, so maybe it's...
Maybe it's way back to...
The bids were in the paper for the Boggs Colfer, and anybody interested will be able to meet with me on January 5th, 9 o'clock, for a site review. And as far as the roads are still holding up good, I'm discontinuing the general maintenance, of making sure everything is in shape. So, that's basically all I have at this time. I do have the...
Five minutes, Mark, oh my God, I'm stunned.
I do have the on orders, perhaps, maybe tomorrow, the pot hole by Howard, if we...
Okay.
If it's dry and clear, might be able to get that done.
Pot holes?
Pot hole?
Yeah.
At, on Hill Road?
By Howard who?
Howard Oswald.
Howard Oswald's Farm, or...
He's complaining about that, I saw that, like, he's a little whiny dance about that. Don't put that in there, Howard, nine...
He watches these videos.
Hi, Howard.
January 5th, was it?
Yes, January 5th.
Whiny...
Go ahead, go ahead, believe me, I can handle it.
There was discussion.
He owes me anyway, go ahead.
Anything else, Mark?
No, I believe that's it for this thing.
I do have a couple of questions. In the planning for the new salt and sand shed, we talked last month about, or earlier this month, about the general contractor having to hire someone to do that. I did a little research on how, you know, it's a little complicated when you do hire a general contractor, they get anywhere from 5% to 12% of the bid, of the cost of it, so, it's something to consider. Archie couldn't come tonight, I spoke with him last night. So, we're not at a point right now that we need to put a bid out, but that's something to consider for another meeting at another time. And the RFP for a general contractor also would have to be developed, that's all. All right, moving along, Bruce has us, good? Okay, new business. On the Town of Putney share...
I have some too, if you're all done.
Okay. Town of Putney shared town line, winter road maintenance agreement for review and signature. Here, here, on top. This is an agreement between Town and Brookline. Okay, at the Select Board meeting in Putney, their Select Board agreed to codify the agreement between Putney and Brookline for the maintenance of Holland Hill, Bennett Road, and Brookline. Here is a copy of the agreement for review and approval. This is a standard form, it's, it will be dated tonight, I'll put down tonight's date, it's the 20th, right?
Yep.
20th. Somebody read it aloud, or we'll pass it around. I can summarize it real quick.
Why don't you summarize it?
Okay. Putney's provide road maintenance on portions of Holland Hill, Bennett Road that are located in Brookline, and whereas Putney owns a certain piece of real property on Putney Mountain Road in Brookline, further described as an 85-acre parcel, I need ID. Brookline and Putney would wish to formalize an agreement, whereas Putney will provide road maintenance in exchange for Brookline reimbursing Putney for the annual property taxes paid for the Putney Mountain parcel. Therefore, in consideration of the mutual covenants and promises made by Putney and Brookline, the towns of Putney and Brookline will agree as follows, that Putney will maintain plowing, sanding, gravel, and grading the portions of Holland Hill and Bennett Road that are located in Brookline, and that in exchange for said road maintenance by Putney, Brookline agrees to reimburse Putney for the annual property taxes paid to Brookline on the Putney Mountain parcel. This agreement will remain in full force and effect until terminated. This agreement may be terminated by either party at the end of a fiscal year, June 30th, by written letters provided no later than May 1st. It is signed by the town manager in Putney, and I will just, you wanna see it?
No.
So, with your permission...
Yeah. Can I, can I ask, what is the value of the property tax on that? I mean, because I'm just trying to get a sense of...
I can look it up for you.
Are we sure?
I want to see it.
Applicable, relatively applicable relation.
I think it's a very small, just a very corner of Putney's town forest comes in. And it looks to me on the map that there's a little section of Putney Mountain Road that is actually Putney's, on our side, which we don't maintain in the winters, but we can maintain in the summer. Now, the other thing is, there's only like 100 feet of town road that joins Holland Hill. Then it turns onto Bennett Road, and I don't know if Bennett Road is actually what classification it's at. As far as I know, we don't do much maintenance to Bennett Road.
Yeah, since we're in this town, purpose.
So, it should probably get reviewed a little bit before we sign it, maybe have Archie present. present during. I mean, it sounds like a good deal, but I think we should just weigh out parts of that.
Is this the same situation, same land where we were talking about the Putney Road Crew working on that culvert up there?
Right, yep. But that's, that is Holland Hill Road, which the very tail of it comes into Brookline.
Right.
But then, that's where the town turns around. Then you're on Bennett Road and then Purple Mountain turns out from Bennett Road, which is private. So I'm not sure if Bennett Road is class three or four or trail. We've got one resident that lives.
Yeah, Mrs. Sheen.
I guess if you live there, there are two vacation homes.
But it's been a real good deal for both towns. You know, it works really well. It's been going on for many, many years. Mo and I've been here and I've been here eight years, so, and it seems to work very well, so. The taxes on that are 2177.55, $2,177.55. But they're doing awful lot of work.
You say 2177?
2177.55.
Okay.
It's 85 acres they have up there.
Brookline though?
Uh, no, it's a, this is, part of it is in Putney, part of it's in.
Yeah, I think very little of that's in Brookline. I think that's.
Yeah.
So I guess I'm slightly confused when you say this has been going on for a long time. Is this an agreement that we've previously?
Right, it's been, yes, we've been doing this for years, but someone wanted to have it in writing because before it was just a handshake. They would send us the bill for the taxes, we would pay it and so forth, they would take care of the roads up there.
So their town manager would like to have it on.
So they just wanted.
So this is something we've always been doing, it's now just being formalized. Okay, sorry, I just.
Oh, yeah, no, no.
I didn't know anything about that.
That's a very valid question.
Something newly proposed, so.
Nice cooperation.
Yeah, they work really well. And the reason for it is that.
Mark said he had to go around and take care of that little section and sure it'll be a lot more than just 2177.
Plus in the winter, you can't get there from here.
Right.
You know, it's, it really works.
Another thing to back up is this new grant that we are doing, that was one of the sections that was going to be used for part of the grant would be a culvert and some stone lined ditch. So I think I'd like to talk to Archie about it before you send it back.
Shall, all right, so I should table this until the next board meeting?
Yeah, I just would like to have.
And ask Archie to review it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to make sure Archie also understands and doesn't have any issue.
I mean, I do believe that that, I talked to the old road foreman and he said he always maintained that, so. And like Glenn said, it's a long way over there just to do a half hour of work.
Sure.
Way more to get equipment there.
And it's subject to termination every year.
Right.
All right, I'm going to table this motion, I'm going to table any vote to sign this until next, I'll put it on the agenda for January 3rd and sharing this with Archie first.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it would be good to just make sure that the formalized interpretation of it is what we think we've been doing and have been comfortable with. Yeah, thanks, Mark.
Thank you. All right, so I'm going to table this. All right, the second item under new business, Wyndham Solid Waste Management District Memorandum of Understanding for Review and Sign. We each got a copy of this at the last meeting. My question is, number seven on the back, it says, "The district reserves the right to terminate the loan at any time within 30 days' written notice to the town. At the end of 30 days, the town will be responsible for returning the recycling roll up." Whose truck does it go in?
Well, we'd have to, we'd have to pay Triple T to return them.
Return. Is there like, is that a regular $160 fee or is it some other?
We would prob, oh, if they had to actually return those, yeah, they'd probably charge us.
Charge it one way.
130 bucks times the two they've got.
Okay.
Plus they would have to return the one, because they always have one at their place, which they use to swap out, so they would return those.
So that's a known, it's a known, a fairly known cost.
Yeah, it's a fairly known, I mean, worst case scenario, my assumption is that we would just pay 260 bucks to get Triple T to return those.
I didn't want to.
Or the district currently has a truck that can do that and whatever.
All right, I was just worried that we would have to find a way out of it if they all.
Right, I mean, I guess the other thing I'd say is that in cases like this, like, I mean, the district does reserve the right to terminate the loan. That wouldn't happen without there being a vote of the board at the district, of which I am a member or we are a member.
Right.
So we would.
No.
We would know farther in advance that this was going to happen. And conceivably, the reason that that would happen, I don't know, I guess would be if the district got into such a position financially that we needed to cash out all of the assets of the district.
Okay.
And then they would terminate the loan in order to get those bins back, in order to liquidate them and get money. I mean, I can't really conceive of another reason.
Okay, I was just concerned that.
Yes. But yeah, it's true. I mean, the thing I'll say about this, I mean, I read through it, I'm comfortable with it and I think there's enough flexibility in it that. But the reality is, yes, we, you know, if, if we have a fire in one of those and we need to get rid of it and whatever, it's a total loss and the insurance on it that they have doesn't give them the full value of it, we, you know, we could potentially be on the hook for some money having these things. There's kind of no way around that. I think that's a minimal risk.
How many times have we had fires?
But.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I mean, have we had fires in those?
By guys that I know of. This is maybe town.
Twice in how many years?
Five or six. I'm wondering, are we insured?
That won't add recycling in town in a hurry.
Are we insured for that kind of thing? I don't want to something that, check that, check that out.
Yeah, I don't, I thought that the company, because we do not own the dumpsters, that the company we were, well, we were leasing, but they actually lent to us.
Well, no, I mean, the district carries insurance on the containers. I mean, that's.
We've had three fires there.
Number five. I mean, they, the district owns those containers and they carry insurance on those containers.
I was just wondering if we needed to, this is there as a leaser, like you would for the lease car, we'd still insure, you know, I don't know.
I mean, they're located on our property.
Right.
So in theory, we, I don't know, we may have, I don't know, it's.
This is not an original, this is the copy, but it does look for three select board signatures on here. Does anybody have a copy that's not written on, because I wrote all over mine.
I have the copy, but it's not been written on.
Let me just peek through.
The original was probably.
We had it last.
Back with the correspondence from last meeting.
You don't have the work she's filled a budget, do you?
Oh, God.
No, no.
Yeah, let's say.
I didn't bring mine, can we finish this?
No, no, we need to finish this because we need to make, so I make a motion that we, that the board sign and agrees in the memorandum of understanding for Wyndham Solid Waste Management District.
I'll second that motion. Any other discussion? All those that are in favor of signing the memorandum of agreement with the Wyndham Solid Waste Management District, if you have a saying aye and opposed. Mr. Tanza, do you have in last month's correspondence the original for this? That's what we were asking.
I don't know. I don't have it, but maybe Louise has it.
Because it has a spot for three board signatures and, I mean, I can't.
She filed it in that cabinet?
I don't know.
All right. Is your copy clean?
It's, yeah, I mean, I have it written on it, it's, I mean, it will be fine.
How can you tell? You can't tell the difference.
That's a line across.
Oh, it has a line across.
But that's a line across. I know it's a copy because I know I put the original back with the correspondence, but I don't think it, I mean, honestly, I don't think it really, it's a printout of something. It's not a watermarked contract anyway, so I'm sure it's fine if we assign a clean copy.
All right, you want to sign it?
Yeah, let's do it. And it's dated 12/2017. Do you want to sign this?
Sure.
I'm gonna let dots on that.
It's a signature.
What he lacks in voice, he makes up in flourish. Right.
He's trying to be like, "Shall?"
All right, I will see what we have this one to do.
I'm green dead.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're moving now on to Timpson Hill Preschool request for the April 7th. I received a request and I did send off a facilities use form for the preschool to do their fundraiser on April 7th, which would be the third rabbit run event in Brookline. They would provide the insurance riders as requested, as in the past, they have port potties at the, near the bridge and near the recycling bins. They'd just be coming through town once and doing one loop, starting at New Brook, ending at New Brook. There's no parking, no vendors, no nothing else.
I think it's a great idea, like it has been in the past, I'm totally in favor of.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the Timpson, New Pianet Hill Preschool, April 7th Rabbit Run from David and a seconded from Bruce. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of this, if you have a saying aye?
Aye.
Any negatives or abstentions?
Abstain.
Abstain, Chris is abstaining, come and vote. Okay, very good, so that motion passed. We shall nail them. Okay, you wanted to spring something up?
No, so very quickly, last night, Peter was there, I was at the Leland and Gray Budget Meeting, which was real, there was about 40 people there disputing the reduction of social worker and it got very erred out, to say the least. And Mr. Tebow really was kind of defeated pretty soundly. So it looks as though it's going to be going back here. But the reason why I brought it up is because I also saw what our taxes are going to be, of an increase of 6% for this town, plus our CLA is 94.1%.
Right, so that will increase our education side.
Yep, and they're having all kinds, there's a lot of complaints about the way, it was in today's papers, Scott, I don't think.
Yeah, everybody's, their backs are to the wall.
They really are. And I can't believe what they got. Jamaica's going up like 16%, Wyndham's going up like 70%, I think New Fane was 5% or 4% and Towns is 13%.
But you said Brookline is 6%?
6%, but the CLA changes it.
Right, yes, the CLA because they think, the state thinks that we're underfunded, so we're not paying enough taxes. So that means if you're under 100, that means they increase the amount of taxes.
Make it to 100%.
Education taxes. And if you're over, then they decrease it, so that's the play.
And the others are more closer to the 100% figure than we are. I think there's one other, I love that one. Anyway, I just wanted to make all aware of that, if any more questions about it later, I can fill in, but it was quite, oh, Leland Ball is absolutely off the charts, absolutely off the charts.
In a good way.
Oh, 30 years, 30 years of social worker and she just took that whole meeting and channeled it right towards the right way it should be, because everybody's this, you know, that and this and that, and then she gave her experience and contested, and contested why there shouldn't be an additional guidance counselor and reducing the social worker and that was basically an hour, hour and a half discussion with Peter. Did I do okay with the explanation relatively?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll paste them the other minutes.
No.
Only like 15 pages.
Thank you, Bruce, for going to that. Remember that, and that's excellent.
Barbara Moore was, who was a, there was a teacher here in town that I don't, never saw her, she's a teacher in, for, in Bradleboro, she has two kids here in town, I don't know her name.
Kristy Henderson?
I don't know, dark hair.
Oh, Kristy Henderson.
She was there, there were some social workers there, psychoanalysts, there was really quite, quite 30 some odd names on the petition, teachers telling Bob Tebow to change it around, it was pretty explosive. So anyway, that's that.
Okay, any other new business? Hearing that, we're moving on to old business. I did want to bring up one question that was asked of me and Bruce, I, you might have the answer for this. When we did the barbed gravel for the damage to the road in, around Southern Lane daycare, did we get, do you feel that the amount of gravel that was delivered was enough? How much gravel did you order?
I didn't. How much did we get?
We got a 10-wheeler load of crushed stone.
It seemed to be a fair trade. It did seem to be a fair trade at the time, right?
Well, according to an estimated gas, one 10-wheeler truckload value was like 400 or 450.
So that's about half of the value of probably what we, the cost we incurred, or yeah, something close to that.
Yeah, so I thought that you had talked to and ordered the number we have there.
I'm messing with my.
Yeah, trying to remember, okay. So then my question is, so we're due some additional gravel for that $820?
Someone's going to be left off at the town shed, I think, remember?
Yeah, that is the value it was to be delivered to the town shed.
Well, I don't think we got that, did we?
All right, so I'm going to say, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
So that's what I'm trying to follow up on this. So we're due another 10, another 10-wheeler, another truckload?
Yeah, that would be a good guess.
Roughly, you said 400?
Yeah, it was 800, the original was 800 something.
820.
Or not quite a 10.
10-wheeler load, you know, the body sizes range a few yards, but you know, 16-yard, there's a 16-yard load around $400, that's an estimate.
So I'm going to be asking the individual to deliver to the townyard where, would they deliver to the townyard, where, and is there a location I can contact?
Well, is it going to be crushed gravel? Would that be?
What am I, that's what I'm asking, what am I right, what am I going to be requesting?
Because we got stone last night.
We got stone for the perimeter drainage around the school.
Right.
Stone may be a good thing to use during wet season, we could have stone.
Mark, did you, did we originally say that, did you originally say that we got a 10-yard load of crushed?
A 10-wheeler load, you know.
Of stone?
Of crushed stone.
Of crushed, okay, sorry.
You know, and however, we may end up needing more sand, so maybe, I don't know, sand is the same value, 10-wheeler load. Anyway, it could be stone, gravel, or sand delivered to our.
All right, I will confer with Archie about this then. I wasn't sure how much was delivered. I thought we had a, I thought it was quid pro quo, I thought it was the full amount, $820 worth of gravel that was placed around the building and it appears that only half of it was, the value was half of that. So we're due additional material that we have to contact the vendor about. All right, so I'll follow up on that.
I mean, I guess what I would say could be proposed is that, since we are purchasing sand from that vendor, could that vendor credit our account with the balance of the value?
I don't want to really muddy things up too much.
Yeah.
Yeah, Dave, it might be a good idea to keep the original green with red.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's extremely money right now. So I don't know, I don't know that I see this as getting any money.
Oh, we have a contract.
However you want to do it, however you want to.
Well, I think for the original agreement was of our situation with what I'm getting.
Was for that.
Unless Mike says something different.
The amount of sand that we had delivered is over 200 yards, which is what we bid for 200 yards. We got 224 delivered. So that contract's been fulfilled for the sand.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's written up for the winter season or for 200 yards. The price is now if we need more.
The price holds if we need more.
Right.
Correct. All right, I'll check with.
100 yards plus.
Plus, I'll check with Archie about how to board this, I'm glad I.
My only question is that tomorrow, do I sign that check or do we hold the check?
Tomorrow you sign the check.
For Fitzpatrick. There's a note on your.
I have a note.
Oh, okay.
All right. So I'll see that then when I. This is about the school. To close off that issue. All right, good, I'll follow up on that. At this point then, any other old business? If not, 7:00 or early, we're going to start working on our budget planning for 2018 and 19. Well, we could, I'm going to ask a question before tomorrow gets here.
Oh, she's coming?
Yeah, she said she'd come about 7:30.
Okay. We can go around it and finish the list.
Should we try to deal with communications?
All right. Let's do, let's do.
Attaboy.
All right.
Could we skip ahead to number 11?
Yes, let's do that, all right.
And if she's not here, we'll do payers if we want. We keep her out of the room.
Communications. It was brought up at the hearing, or six round the hearing of the town plan about the recycling yard because that is part of the town plan. And there was a question again about using a camera at the recycling yard, whether it be a fake camera or a real camera, that it might still deter people from using it illegally. And I just wanted to touch base with the guys and see if you still think about it.
Yeah, I mean, the idea of putting up a fake camera, I think we've discussed at points. I mean, we could, we could try doing that.
Listen, $50.
Yeah, right. I mean, I've not, I've never been able to figure out a way. I've never had anyone explain to me how we could put a real camera out there and have it work remotely. So to me, the only option would be if we put up a fake camera and we put up maybe some more signs indicating that there's a camera there. The problem is, there's nowhere to put a cam. I mean, when you go to the site, there's no poles. The nearest phone poles are on the other side of the street and they're way far away.
And you can't even use a phone pole for town stuff.
Well, we could actually, we could actually get permission from.
They're not even paying attention to the sign that's right in front of it. Because guys stopped somewhere yesterday for housing. They're not even reading the sign that's right in front of their face.
I think we're kind of wasting our time.
You know.
It was brought up, it was a clear.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I mean, and if, if there were things about the site that were a little bit different, it would maybe seem more practical. But it's true. I mean, I guess in order to even put up a fake camera that in my mind would be practical, we have to put a pole up there.
This is something that was brought up, we might bring it up again on Snowscum because my head's a little difficult.
Yeah. No, I mean, it's a very good point and maybe we should try to figure out a way to do it once it snows.
Okay. Mary shooting you in the brain. Going on, going forward, donated funds again. We received a $500 donation to be used for the Round School House from Meyer's Corporation. And I was just going to follow up on David. Did you speak to Doug?
I did. So I talked to Doug and we kind of made a bit of a, had a bit of a discussion about it. I mean, you know, he said by his own admission and the other people on the Historical Society, they haven't really been able to meet in a while. And they haven't, they know that they haven't really been working on any projects. But Doug certainly has a mind next year to try to do the work on reinforcing and fixing the shed that needs a few reinforcements. And he just needs to identify, once his sawmill is opened up again, his intention is to find some local wood and mill some wood to be able to shore that up. And that's not a huge job, but it's something that I think we want to try to accomplish. The other thing he mentioned, and this is a discussion for, once we get farther along, is they've, they've discussed for a long time possibly purchasing, finding and purchasing some period school desks and some other things like that to some, to go some way towards re-setting up the schoolhouse to look more like it did. So possibly the money could be used to aid that. The discussion that Peter Meyer had made the suggestion through an email that he and the Mary Meyer Corporation are happy for the money to go into the Round School, to be designated for the Round School House, to be used in whatever way the Historical Society and/or the Select Board sees fit, as long as that is money that gets spent during 2018. Any monies of that $500 donation that aren't utilized for the schoolhouse by the end of 2018, they would like that, the balance of that money to be transferred to the Meeting House Fund to then be something that's available for Meeting House repairs.
So use that whatever, use that first or whatever. Did you, I don't know, because we got, we got a bunch of like.
They want it to be used for the Round School House, but their concern with, with good reason is that there's been money allocated to the schoolhouse previously that still hasn't been used. So they don't want the money to just sit unused on any project for years. So, so what I said to Peter, I, you know, I'll certainly, I'm certainly happy once we get to spring to work with Doug and whoever else from the Historical Society and maybe try to make more of an effort to do a project or to, that can be funded by this money next year. And then, you know, we'll see where we go, but it's.
Okay, very good. And I also just want to say that you are developing a mold issue in here because of the dampness in the summertime. So I know we don't have any power. I brought that up before. We may want to have some kind of humidification in the summer months. Roger Alby, I spoke to him last week and he said, when they went in there to use it for the mini marsh dedication, everything had a grain slime.
Oh, God.
Everything, everything. And the books were damp and it was just because of the humidity. So that's another concern that we're going to develop. All right, well, that's, but in the minutes, I wanted that to be.
I don't want to beat a dead horse because you know, I was the first couple of years of our, of our speaking on the Select Board. We had $5,000 grant available to us that nobody would do. We were promised.
Right, yeah, I know. So you're saying that's why they don't want to be.
Promised by, at least by Cynthia. Of course, that didn't happen. Samara said she'd pick up and take care of it and look into the, into the grant. That never happened. So, and I was beating that horse for about two years and it just never happened. And now if we had that money, we'd have like $10,000 in that account. And if there was any remediation we had to do for the mold, we have the money to count. So now we just have the 5,000 plus some. I think it's 4,800, is that right, Doc? For what we got in that account?
I don't know what's in the account. And I don't know.
That's the 500.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Okay, so then we're going to move on to, there's no other email that anybody got that they need to communicate? Regular mail, I'll just take a look. All right, guys, is this what you're talking about? The 2017 equalization study results?
Yes, that's the CLA and ACD.
Common level of appraisal is 95.18%. So because it is below 100%, they feel that we have to pay more in education.
Well, yeah, they will, when they, when they put all the figures together, if a town is under 100%, they think that we're not taxing the residents enough. So that will trigger an increase of education taxes. And if it's over, they feel that people are taxed more than they should be and then their taxes would be diminished by someone.
And they determine that by how, a sales or a bill?
It's a formula up in Mont Peculia that is beyond comprehension.
I'll take it from that.
Other piece of mail here is from Senior Solutions. Again, Senior Solutions Brookline, who's been awarded to the Sigrid Palase, who passed away about 10 days after receiving this award. So she's quite proud of that. There's a mail from New Brook Fire Department, a request for donations. And I believe ours is handled in the appropriations part, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So then, oh, here is the Wyndham Solid Waste Management District original contract.
See, now you're better than you thought.
Should we resign now?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Oh, yeah, it's in the mail.
I don't know that one.
This kills me.
Is that the New Brook that you have, David? Yeah. Okay, because we, we make our donations through the appropriations. So I can just discard that.
We found the original.
The next one is from Project Feez, thanking us for a $100 donation. Sign.
This is what you already got, probably forgotten in the mail from New Brook.
Does this need to be signed? Yes. That was the one we had a question. What we thought was the same. This is a letter from the New Brook Fire Rescue. This seems to be the same as what we just got in the form, saying that the fire rescue is, with the closing of the.
Williamsville.
Williamsville, but I do a little stress.
The same one.
Same, same letter, okay, so. Senior Solutions is requesting an appropriation of $650. Is that added to our appropriations list? And that is all we have for paper fire responders.
Keep on going.
Okay.
I'll be careful, I'll be careful.
Okay.
I know, make me happy.
All right, I'm going to move on to pay orders and accounts payable. So if you look at that, I'm going to go through this and then pass it around. Please repost it and let's go to official notes. Second, as projected, given the town, full compensation. Oh, and materials for last year's sand. Oh, if not, should we pursue or hold the check?
Put you down. Are you going to pay?
That's, that was the question. There is a note, this is, I'm looking at the accounts payable, which I'm going to pass around to you. There is a check in here to pay Fitzpatrick Escavating for the sand delivery of $3,696 with the materials which we have, had, was delivered to the sand shed. The question is, should this check be held or changed in any way? I'll pass this around.
No, I mean, I think we're all in agreement.
No, absolutely not.
I mean, we should pay them for what they provide. Certainly we shouldn't.
We got a different agreement for that.
Yeah, right.
Okay. All right, so then I'll make additional notes.
Well, why would he be upset for having to out to Liversany?
Right, so you're, for weeks, so you're going to pay the full amount, correct?
We're going to pay the full amount for this because it was.
All right, I'll sign that.
The other ones are different, they're different.
Yep, that's what I thought, but I just want to make sure before I sign the check that.
It was a different agreement to your point.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of what the word was.
We'll handle resolving it separate to this, we're not going to.
So this is an amount to be paid to Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
But it's not, it's not the all of the matters with Fitzpatrick?
Correct, it's not all.
This is for winter road sand.
This is winter road sand, which is, that's what his contract he got. Okay, this one, this is, this one we don't need to sign because we signed it earlier. So I can just do that. We don't need to sign that one.
I'll take it back, actually.
So, so.
Yeah, I had to do that because.
I can really get some help for yourself.
This I'm going to show Archie. Okay. I have in front of me payroll warrant, 2018-23 dated 12/13/2007. I'd like to make a motion.
2007?
Team. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the payroll warrant in the amount of $10,884.46. Can I have a second on that?
Second.
Seconded by David. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving this payroll warrant, 2018-23 for $10,884.46, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Payroll warrant has been.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Relating to this. Guy, here there's two expenses to carry.
Carry born, yeah, one for 4,000 and then I think there was something that maybe he had to.
Is it 4,000 a grain?
Right, if you look at the invoice in there.
The check itself.
You correlate for where the check is numbered? So if it's in the back.
Okay. Here's my number here. I'll say another, okay. I know what that looks like, Fitzpatrick. What that looks like Fitzpatrick. Okay. So, he paid for it, and we're reimbursing him.
Is that, I don't know how that worked out.
Reimbursed to Kerry Bourne, $4,225. That's what it looks like.
Okay.
Fire Department, okay. Okay, this looks legit. Probably a little less than, I thought it was gonna be over $5, this is dead now. Okay, I'm good. I'm good. Kinda good.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the accounts payable warrant, for 12/20/17, in the amount of $28,463.26. May I have a second?
Second.
Bruce, any discussion? All those in favor of accounts payable, 2018-24, for $28,463.26, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect.
Who seconded?
Bruce.
Bruce.
He seconded it, he thirded it.
Accounts payable, payable, all right. Let's take a look at the agenda for the regular meeting for January 3rd. As we're moving along, before we do the budget. So on January 3rd, we have to review over the Putney, Brookline, memorandum of understanding. And we also have to review the barter with Fitzpatrick Excavating regarding an additional amount of material that still needs to be delivered, because 50% still needs to be delivered. Okay, and anything else that you can think of for January 3rd?
We should probably touch base on the town report.
Town report, okay.
Summation of budget, final numbers change, and the final number.
Town report, budget. Anything else? Send out a draft if you think of something. You say, add to it. All right, so those four items, budget, town report, bartering, Putney, Brookline memorandum of understanding.
Update on the cut?
Oh, and if there is any, yeah, if there is, cool. I'll do that.
Yeah, this.
Okay. Oh, yeah, I have town report. Okay, we're gonna...
Isn't that the usual?
And you have a lot of the others. Okay, so let me just clear up the area, we're gonna now work on our budget.
Could I just, is this the final, the budget's the final topic tonight?
Yes.
I just wanted to say, I think I weren't listening in, but I did put Sunnyland daycare, I did get that condition.
She was very, 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 very happy, and the cook wants to say, but they were very, very happy, because it's not cold and drafty. Appreciate that.
Yeah, that's a big difference. I put about eight different panels of insulation in there. Posted up, so it will be a lot tighter.
Awesome, thanks for doing that, Mark.
Good. We did a lot of stuff down this way.
All right, well, maybe I missed a meeting, but I was looking down through on the list, and we did do the wood chips.
Yeah.
So there is quite a few things that have been...
Right.
We did on the list. And I'll pick any that can weigh in.
Right, there's a couple of things that, like the signage and handrails and eschols.
Hey, you know, Doc, since we're talking about Sunnyland daycare, after we get past...
Actually, the eschols. Yeah, I did, I went to get those, and they were too big to fit through the holes on the top. So I will...
So we'll find.
I'll either find something or squeeze them together.
Okay, yeah, let me know what you do, especially when I write it. I wrote to Wade, he got bounced back, I'm not too worried about it. He not sure if, um...
And as far as the fuel tank goes for the greater shed, I'm working on that with Archie. I got the one price for a tank, which was around $3,700. But we were talking now of, once the New Salt Sand Shed is complete, having a site roof off for a fuel tank.
Good idea.
Yeah.
Should we put it inside?
Yeah.
Perfect.
So, we were, I don't know how soon we need to solve that issue with insurance. The tank that I've got is a double-wheeled tank, and the van tank itself was around $1,400. And it doesn't need a containment because it's double wall.
Right.
So it needs the insurance.
Insurance regulations. Oh, glad you recall that.
So the big price would be all the add-on, the vent by filler plate, a new fuel pump hose, brings it up, you know, another thousand or more.
Yeah, and that's quick.
But we had noticed the state's done this in other towns, so maybe it's time of construction, a little roof could be built.
Like I did on my shed. I love it, and flood, I'll use it today. Cracker start on the fresh track, took out the boarder.
Anything else, Mark?
No, that's it.
Good, Doc?
Yes, sir.
Keep my Sunnyland daycare, maybe after we get past the budget process and kind of test it out, we start thinking about getting bids or a bid for around the soffits that we were talking about.
Yeah, we have, we can look at the RFPs that we already put out at one point, and we revise it.
Mm-hmm. Things may move along, because that's when we should be doing it.
Right, okay.
Okay, that's my point. That change.
Okay. All right, at this point then, we will, we're all set. We just have to do number 14 after we do number 10.
Got it.
All right, so I'm just gonna put away some things here, and...
Relax, chop it and don't spend it on.
Hi. Thanks for the dates.
Very welcome. Hopefully we'll come relatively close to making this.
Well, you have sort of the crunch list. The big thing is making sure you get all the money, guys.
Yeah.
So I'll get started.
Well, that part will be, I mean...
They'll probably be in the crunch this, you know, I'm sure that the winter break is when they do most of the work.
Yeah.
And when Heidi started, I got some interesting notes left.
Well, if you'd like to come on up, we can sit here at the table and work on our budget. One of the things that I just wanted to say before we get is, do we need to add a line item for the Brookline meeting house? Because not everything forever has gonna be paid, we're gonna be spending down our donations and that, and do we need to have, do we need to budget for some money?
That's a question for the committee.
Right, that's what I...
How much, how much fundraising are they gonna do?
Mark, you can join us.
I mean, it's really a question of, do we want to start budgeting for other funds? That is the question, do we start budgeting for some of the other funds? There's two funds that would be funds that are not state, don't get state grants every year, and aren't always necessarily self-supporting. Our, the school building fund and the meeting house fund. But they'll have to revise their billboard, you know, if we start budgeting.
I have, correct me if I'm wrong, but we talked about the dollars since, a couple of weeks ago, and you have to net it out after this check.
They'll still have, after we move money from the loan funds that they're on, they're getting a match grant, there's, okay, so after today's bill, they have just under $4,000 left in this one. But they also have a $7,000 coming back from the grant, so that'll bring it up to about 11. And then, there was a pledge from several meetings ago that the loan funds, the revolving loan funds, that's not active, has, they got about $12,000 of it, but they were eligible for up to $18,000 match or something.
Yeah, 17 or 18.
I have to go back and look.
17 or 18,000?
It's around, yeah, 17 or 18,000, you know, up to one half of what was spent.
Right, no, six grain.
So I think there's another $5,900 left in the fund that they could spend from that. So then that would take them back up to about $17,000. They're getting regular donations, a $50 donation got deposited today. It's a question of how much fundraising they're gonna do.
Well, there's enough to have a matching grant if we choose to go that route. There's enough to have for this year to...
I think this is a question where if you want to empower the committee, you have to ask, you have to talk to the people in the committee.
Yeah, I mean, I'm a little reluctant to suggest budgeting money for something that, at the moment, we're not even sure we can keep a committee to decide what...
I agree.
What might we even do with it, we don't even know.
No, Leanne has stepped up to the plate, Leanne has really...
Right now, it seems like maybe that's...
There are two people on the right.
There's two people on the committee, they need to recruit more people, they know this.
So, Mar, a thousand of this is dedicated, though, correct, to the kitchen?
I'm sorry? A thousand is restricted to kitchen renovation.
So I just brought that up because I realized that it's, you know, something that, whether we wanted to, make sure we have enough to pay for the power or tech insurance or anything like that.
That's included in our, we budget for that already.
In general, that's...
We, in general, the town fund picks up all their utilities already.
Okay.
Yeah, we do budget for it. So, yeah, I mean, we have line items for it. I think we covered for them. I brought my color-coded, I know I missed the last budget meeting, and Guy gave me his copy, and I filled in all the blanks on the highway. And my, you know, going through and making sure I filled them in correctly. But I copied what Guy would have done in these places. So I had a few yellow items left. The biggest yellow item in the, I mean, what we have, we have, oh, yeah, sorry.
It's okay. So, yeah, should we start by going?
Should we begin on the one?
We have to appropriate it.
Are you finished with the appropriations?
Well, there's a couple of yellow ones.
Well, there's a few that we have to discuss that have come in.
I didn't see my appropriation.
We have to, I mean, we all have the updated.
Yeah, I did.
She sent it for the 11. I just made a, yeah, all the 11. Just mine is a little bit small.
You're saying, you're saying...
It's the small one, yeah. That's a lot I need.
We have right now...
What do you say to your... I got it.
I think, I think there's a few more requests. We had some requests from listening males.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You want?
I have some new requests that came in after this was updated.
I need one, and yours is bigger than mine.
Do you want another one?
Yes. Everybody else have, I'm gonna add two more.
Of what?
The appropriations chart.
Yes, I have that.
I have an older one, mine is from 11/10. No, mine is from 12/1.
There's a line for some.
My just sent was 12/11. It's just not, I don't have the yellow to confirm.
Okay, I made two, thank you.
So, Mar, did we have a line for what the list is put away toward a appraisal each year?
It's, it's in a separate fund.
Okay, yeah, right.
It's, there's 28, about 28,000.
Right, that's what we have, but how was it, how do we get that?
We get a state allotment of about, oh, God, what is it, 2,000 a year or something?
Oh, so we don't pay you?
And then there's, the state gives us some money.
Yes, we try to stay on the...
Yeah, let's do that, yeah.
We try to just stay on the appropriations, but nail that, and then, these are things we can discuss.
No, the state, okay. Until we need more money, okay.
Finish appropriations.
Okay, let's do it.
So...
All right, we got three yellow lined off here.
Right, it looks like we received...
Green Mountain denied that, correct?
What's that?
Did you get a, did you get a request this year? I didn't see that.
I don't think so.
Request what?
In either event, we didn't approve, so that's probably...
So, that's a no.
Right here, right here.
So we got a new request that we haven't yet received from Leland and Gray Foundation for $250.
We've gotten a request?
Yeah.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Yeah, we did.
The request is in.
So, we need to decide if we're funding that like we have previously. Seems it's the same amount that they've requested previously. I would be in favor of that, if everybody...
Anybody opposed to the $250 request from LNG? Let's put $250 there.
All right, and back up to, I'm going in order, but back up to Grace Cottie Foundation. We got a second request that corrected the 300 to 500, shouldn't that be put in the chart?
That was requested, but I believe we decided not to.
No, we decided not to honor it, but, but it was requested.
Yeah, we decided to put it as an article?
No, we didn't.
No, we, initially, they requested $300, but then they sent a revised request saying, sorry, we actually intended that we should have requested $500. We discussed it, we all agreed to keep the appropriation at the 300 that has historically been done and that they originally requested. So I agree it would be tidy if it was kept on the worksheets or the...
I'll put it in a worksheet, but I think, you know...
It doesn't change what we decided.
Yeah.
No, it doesn't change what we decided, we decided 300.
Right.
And if you were to increase it, we would have to vote the 200 as a separate, separately.
Right, continue with the other stuff.
Like we did, we did that with Senior Solutions. So that's kind of been the tradition in town. If somebody opts a request and it's different from the past year...
So then we put it in as a...
We vote the extra, if, if you approve the 500, if you say, yeah, we want to bring that to a vote, then we take that 200, and it would drop down into new FY 2019 requests. Okay, just so you're, you know, what that's all about. So that would take it down, so no to Green Mountain. Townsend Food Bank is under Project Feed the Thousands, are you all clear on that now?
Yes.
Okay.
And they're kind of clarified it.
Yeah, it's, it's, it was like, we realized after the first year when we funded it twice, it was duplicative. The VACD Fire Hydrant, what was that?
It's in order, yeah, I'm confused now.
So, yeah, so, I am supportive of the $100 for Project Feed the Thousands. Now that we understand that it is in fact going to...
Ten, yeah.
So are we all in agreement on that?
Oh, so we're gonna do the $100?
Yes, yes.
It is, it's a designated, it's designated Townsend.
Right, every little discussion, okay.
We were confused last time because we didn't have all of, we didn't understand all of it.
We thought it was...
I got it.
So is anybody opposed to funding that at all?
$100 is all, and I didn't hear. Next open one is Senior Solutions. In the past, they've requested $650, we gave five. They're requesting $650 again this year. The request came in, it's in today's mail. What's the board's pleasure?
This board's pleasure is five.
Five hundred. Yeah, I vote to level, fund it, or keep it at 500.
All right, any question about that? So, all right, we're gonna keep the funding for Senior... So, all right, we're gonna keep the funding for Senior Solutions at $500 from the town of Brooklyn and the appropriations. Except for, so Townsend Food Bank, so we just cross that, just cross that out.
That should just be completely...
You can line that out, it'd be deleted, so, okay.
Association of the Pines is done. The fire hydrant grant was turned down for fiscal year 2018. Any questions about that?
Mine, yeah, mine we thought, you know what? We should look into getting more grants from that, because that's a grant program.
I do remember speaking about this past, the board, at that time, we went around, I think Archie was saying that there are no more ponds that would be good for a dry hydrant in town.
Okay.
Well, there is a recently built pond on the African Trail, you know. It was built this summer. About one mile up on the left.
The great big one that, that's right on the...
That's a natural one.
This is a handmade pond, it was, the land was cleared and you don't see the water because it's up so high, but it's a pretty good...
I want to ask you something, if that was my land, I mean, do we...
Well, that's, the only one I know about is the one John Wellman helped pay for. We got a grant for $2,500 and he, and he put, and he matched it himself and it's on his land. So, yeah, it can go on private land over there.
Oh, yeah, it's on circles.
It was with the land owner's permission, though.
But it, but it's gotta have a certain depth and hold so many, it's got restrictions on how, what, from what... Yeah, it's basically... It had to have a certain restrictions on what the pond's size and depth was supposed to be.
I don't know what the, what the, you know, specs are that you have to have in a pond to have it there. But the only one I know, I think we did get one...
How about the servos, did they put them in?
I don't know when they put them in, if that was with a grant or if they did it themselves. The only one I know of is the one that Wellman helped, you know, he matched it.
Can I just suggest we're getting way off topic?
Sorry, you're right.
Could we just...
But it was just a thought that occurred to me.
Sure, yeah, but it is something to consider for another discussion.
Okay.
So I would say not at this time, and then if it was, if there was some interest in pursuing grant work, then that's something we can look into between now and this time next year to see if that pond is something that we might, I mean, I have not been there, I have no idea about it. So at this time, I'd say, what's the board's pleasure? Okay, yes, no?
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's, we're, we're having a budget discussion and discussing things we have approved or not approved, and so it's not really even relevant. So I guess I'd say it's a discussion for... Sure, yeah.
I'm just a pawn sucker.
Well, I'm just trying to, I mean, we haven't, we didn't publish an agenda we're gonna talk about.
Right.
Applying for grants.
No, no, it just came up because I saw that thing, you're right, it's off, it's off topic. Okay, all right, so we're gonna move down, everything else, here's...
So it's up twice here.
Yeah, I know, Louise, yeah, Louise put it down below, but it's not approved, so.
Okay.
I had one question that I found in our mailbox. On Southern Vermont Therapeutic Riding Center, center request.
There was no money posted.
They didn't ask for an amount, so the question is, is do you want to put it on as a new consideration? And if so, how much would you be willing to give them? I mean, if, if it's something under consideration, that's...
I don't know, does that really have any variable?
Well, they say, we currently... As we're in the point of riding now, this cuts.
Is that right?
It's very, it's very helpful for some handicapped people. Yeah, but the requests, yeah, well, where is it, where is it gathered?
They are, they are Wilmington, not Wilmington.
No, they're right down the road.
No, they're not.
Not anymore there. Did I do one of those, did you do one time?
I did.
Oh, now they're in Wilmington, they used to be there.
So I, you know, I...
Right, I mean, we did discuss it, because they came and forced funds the last time.
I think we're just not, they're saying this year, since it's unclear what you really wanted from us, that we are not...
So this is gonna be a send them a letter.
Send them a letter, be more specific when you request.
Need specific request.
But that's for this year, yeah, this year.
Yeah, I mean, right, I don't see your appropriation.
I just, I just didn't have anything that says revisit on it. No amount listed revisit, so I just want to pay up. Need specific money, send them a letter.
And how many benefits in Brooklyn? Isn't that part of your, your draft, your letter? Yeah, how it affects the residents of Brooklyn.
Right. Did we submit, did you submit that? We did a, did Louise do it or did you?
I thought you said postcards, saying that we needed to know how specifically it's set.
It affects, it does.
If it affects Brooklyn, how many people participate, you know, that type thing.
It says, it does here, it says, we currently serve 21 clients from Southern Vermont with several who reside in Brooklyn. So they met that requirement.
Yeah.
And as you guys are doing the town, just before, in the past, they would put in the catalog those letters.
Which they don't do anymore because of the...
No, we started, we had too much printing costs, so we were gonna do it, it says something.
So right now, there's a notebook, a three-ring notebook, that has all of them in alphabetic order that we accept.
For appropriations?
Yeah. Or annual reports, I mean, there are appropriations and then some are just organizational reports from... So at some point, I think the choice would be, you want to just put a loose leaf binder there or make limited number of copies for distribution of everything. But it's a choice you guys made, whatever...
Because they're not going to be in the town, they're not going to be in the town.
No, there was a decision made several years ago to keep the cost down.
And I know we said sevens, they're asking way too much for our little tens, we want to make a total.
Where's this for?
Sevens.
Sevens.
They're requesting $1,590, we turned them down the past two years, I'm asking if you wanted to look at it.
What, Southern Vermont, uh...
V E D S.
We discussed it last time and decided not to.
Yeah, right, they didn't really concern us.
All appropriations, so that's it, we finished the appropriations. Okay, what's that to think, any other ones coming in today?
Oh, yes.
None that I'm aware of.
There are a couple repeats.
Yeah, a couple of senior solutions. All right, so this is...
You got some, thank you.
So this is done.
So we're done with appropriations?
Yeah.
So why don't you come up with a final figure that sits you up there?
Why do I have a final figure?
I mean, we're...
It's just to add $100, so that would make it 5456, that's the only one that's not on there.
Well, see, you still have your, plus 250, and you still have your...
By 500, 5, 6, 7, 8, 50.
6206 or something like that?
I think that's what I have on my chart.
Yeah, sorry. Plus 250, 100.
Well, this one says 506.
6206 is what I got.
Okay.
So why is this one 6306?
He says that's what it was last year.
What's the 506?
That was last year, yeah, right.
So we pretty much stayed the same as last year.
Yeah.
$100 less.
$100 less.
Well, CRP has...
We're fortunate for this.
And we got one new Girdes Aquan Rescue will be voted separately, warned separately.
Correct. So that's warned separately?
I'll type up the, I'll take up the appropriation warning.
You don't work enough.
So it's like your contract.
Never mind. Yeah, you guys don't have to worry about doing that particular warning.
Okay.
That chart gets, I mean, you guys do those.
I did, I did, I did it last year.
I think you did the, yeah, the chart I do, do, and the verbiage you do.
But I think I typed it into the specific learning.
You didn't have to type in the chart. If you did, you didn't have to.
I did that.
Okay. Yeah, you didn't have to, because it's all on.
Didn't write. Well, they, anyway, now...
All right, so now we're working on, okay, so what do you want to work on next? You have, hey, great, and we have...
It doesn't look like it is. Yeah, 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 let's go. The revenue is done, now you have to just decide what you want to, I mean, where I have the big yellow blanks are all, everybody's compensation. Payroll taxes are calculated, so you decide what you want to stay flat, increase, decrease.
I want to know the rest of the budget, where we are.
Before we do, okay.
Right, when I see that, so we try to go back through the highway, which we pretty much finished, and I think Samara has some questions.
I have, I know Pam, I have...
Or we want to just confirm that we're all on the same page.
You want to confirm that I got everything in? You want me to read what I typed in for highway?
Well, I think you sent our, you sent our, you sent an updated worksheet.
I did. Did it look right?
Well, I don't know, I think we should talk, we should run through it. Right, so we're looking at the budget worksheet, updated 12, 2017. That is purely the highway budget, just two pages.
This is $51.
Yes, it looks like this.
Just two pages.
All right. Now you want me to give you a copy?
Who care about the environment?
No, that's, I'll, I'll look at yours tomorrow.
Never mind, I could find it.
I think this is the same one.
Okay.
This is where I felt for summarization for you.
Okay, so everybody's looking at the updated Fund II? Or their worksheet from last time? Okay, so then the first line item proposed, you have...
You started with expenditures, right?
I'm sorry.
Highway operations revenue.
I was going to start with revenues, just to confirm we have numbers, but we can...
No, no, go ahead.
Fund two?
Fund two, starting with the revenues. First line, current taxes, you have plugged in 156650.
Mm-hmm, that's a calculated number.
Yep, right. State aid, we've put in 38,000. Nothing budgeted for highway haven grants or backroads grants. Permits revenue, we've put in $100. Interest on investments, you've put in $200. We had discussed 250 last, at the meeting, but...
I'll tell you why I put in 200, because the cash, cash in the highway count has been much lower than it's been years ago.
Okay, so we'll make it 200, yeah, I mean...
We'll be lucky if we earn 200, and it's a small number.
That's revenues, okay.
Okay. And then that totals out to 194, 950. Then going down to expenditures. So all of the expenditures down to Townshed Electric stayed the same with one exception, which was after Mark and Archie discussed, they, they suggested that the summer contract services equipment rental go up to 39,000. So that went up 2,000. But otherwise, all the other numbers were stuck with what the FY 2018 budget was. Down to that here. Then moving to the second page. Townshed maintenance stayed the same at 1,000. Seminar stayed the same. Everything stayed the same as budgeted down to bridge maintenance, where we decided to lower that by 2,000. That was Archie and Mark's suggestion, in part to balance out the 2,000 increase in the contract. Right?
Perfect, yeah.
And that all totals out at 18697.
Right.
And then the bond repayments, is the bond repayment, the interest is the interest.
Yeah, and that's straight off the repayment schedule, right.
So does that, and that, that's it? And then we add down the 156650. So are you, that's all, that's the stuff you had jives with, everything everybody had from their merits and...
Yeah.
Pretty good.
Okay, so we're good. Fund two is done.
So we just have this one? What?
Do you have any news?
Uh, no, just me and Nancy.
17. Um, just for informational sake, so you know, once the budget stuff is input and I either, at the end of this week or beginning next week, finish the reports for the auditors, you guys will all get a draft.
But that's this.
It'll be this and the form...
A different form?
In the form that it will be going into the town report. And so what that means is, there's some columns that go away, there's some rows that are calculation rows that go away. And the point of notes have been amplified per Archie's request that we break out what's in summer contract services. And I have to double-check Mark's.
So we're just, so basically, thank you, the form.
My father-in-law is legal, he sent my father-in-law a file, and he came with like four boxes.
So, right, I guess just to summarize then, we think we're looking at, we're highway...
The highway...
Highway, we're basically down 51 dollars or whatever, something like that from last year.
If we slash the highway budget.
Okay.
Slashed it.
Slashed it.
Okay, I have, I have, I have one question. And I don't know if it plays into this year or not, but any event we do an abatement for anyone, do we have any money to appropriate for abatement?
No, we never do.
All right, well, in this case, we're gonna have a...
It's about, it's about $2,800 if we do an abatement.
Really? 2,856.
Yeah, I printed it up, yeah.
So basically, we have to fund that somehow, some way, because the town still has to pay the education taxes.
You could, the education taxes are approximately 80% of that.
Right, 85, 80, whatever.
Something. So we could, we could appropriate for abatements. We could budget for abatements, so that would go in the Fund One. We've never done it before, but we might do it. Except it's kind of convoluted, because... It's a question of, there are two ways to look at it. You could look at this year, if we're gonna lose potentially $2,800, where can, where can we make budget cuts in the current year's spending so that we don't end up in the hole that we have to make up the next year?
Or where can we get more revenue than we forecast?
Or where can we increase revenue, those are your choices, cut expenses or increase revenue. So we can't change this year's budget, we already said it, but we could rearrange line items if we go back to this conversation for... That's a conversation for when I pull up this year's budget and we look at that and see what... If you look at November, see where we're at, budget versus actual.
You're talking about this year?
Yeah, I mean, because last year, we finished...
Don't we have a little, we have a little...
We had a little cushion. We had a cushion going into this year. We do, we spent like approximately $5,000 less than what we raised.
Good.
But, so we got the room for it.
It includes an accrual, which we haven't collected, made cash, but you're working on it.
Right, that, yeah...
You know, you know which one.
We had, we had, as you said, we had a surplus.
We have a small surplus. Instead of returning it, we may want to keep it and build it into a reserve for a base, a reserve for abatements? Reserve for disaster abatements? I don't know, I don't know what the legal...
What we got? Well, I think we have to have a 5, 4 abatement, and it doesn't, it doesn't matter who the abatement is for, but the fact that we may have to fund it, and the reason I'm thinking of it, because I think we're very close to having a reappraisal of the town. And I think there's gonna be some grievances, and I think there's gonna be some abatements required and requested. So what I'm trying to do is set the stage for, rather than get blasted with one big figure, have some... figure, have some slowly but surely a way into it. So it isn't a big surprise.
That's a good idea.
Should we give some of each of what he does about, please, the one?
So, you know, each year, we try to save money, but that ugly head just keeps popping up that we...
I think what you have to do is look at how to warrant a reserve, because it's not a reserve unless the town votes on it. It doesn't count as a reserve unless it's voted in by the townspeople. Is there another way of doing it? Not really, not if you want a true reserve fund. You wonder, that's how we...
But for this current abatement, this current $2,800 we have to spend, we basically have the money in this year's budget because of the $5,000 that you've...
Well, we went into it, we had a little bit of a surplus last year.
Don't we even got a deficit? $20,000 deficit.
That was paid for.
That was two years ago, we paid for that, we funded that.
Well, we sure did.
Way back.
No, this year, this year, we should be in better financial shape than we've been in a while.
It's, it's always tricky, because we're like working six months behind, right? Our year closes in June.
Right.
So at the end of June, we closed with a small surplus.
Okay.
All right.
So we don't have to worry about that $2,800.
So the $2,800, assuming nothing else goes upside down...
And again, if that's, if, you know, if that's, if that does, does happen, but even whether that happens or not, I think the town should start preparing itself for what's going to be down the road, which I think we will need some money for abatement because of appraisals and so forth.
Now, how much is that a big cost? Is it based on per person, or is it based on general?
No, you...
No, it's like a fund that you set up, and then once you exhaust it, then you've got to either start borrowing or something else, you know? In the event that someone has a big abatement, you know, there's some fairly good-sized properties in town, whether it be in a fire, or the, you know, the big log home, that pay a lot, a lot of money. That if something went wrong, and they wanted to have that abated, the town's got to come up with that money somehow. What we can do...
Well, you have to go to a board with supportive abatement or whatever.
Right, which we can, but by the same token, we also have the option of taking the abatement and applying it toward a credit for the next year, the next year, the next year, until that abatement is used up. So we don't have to give them the abatement. Do you understand what I'm saying?
We don't have to worry with the cash, we just give them a credit.
Right. So those are, you know, those are some of the options we have as a, as a challenge with abatement.
But, in terms of, I would suggest that we get through the whole budget, and then revisit that piece and decide, because if we're, since we're finishing with a small surplus, we probably should write a warning that says, instead of offsetting this year's taxes with that surplus, which is what we typically do, we sort of build a deficit into the next year with the surplus from the previous year. We set that aside in reserve.
So we're asking, would the town approve blah, 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 blah?
Approving, putting this surplus, allowing this surplus to be held in reserve for blah, 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 however, yeah, okay.
All right, so we'll, we'll pick that abatement question up shortly.
Given the fact that we're just level funded. Correct? Given the fact that we're very much level funded, other than...
We just went through the highway one.
Yeah, we just went through the highway one, we've got to go through town operations.
We have to figure it through operations.
And, I think, revenue side, we were, we were pretty done. I do have one note...
Like, it's just to clarify, we're all looking at the worksheet, updated 12-1, 2017, there's no newer...
Well, there's no newer ones, no.
Okay, so I got that.
Because I didn't have anything new to input. Even on my 12-11, I didn't really change it, I just reprinted it.
12-1 is what we...
It is 12-1.
Okay.
All right, so we're just going to go to the line item by line, and current taxes, well, we don't...
We haven't calculated that, no taxes, that's the oldest.
Current tax revenue for appropriations? We just came up with a new figure, 6306?
6206.
What's your...
I don't know, they skip way down to, yeah, current tax revenue for appropriations, I would just, I'll put that in. Okay, we crossed out, we're on the first page, these two.
Budget worksheet.
Budget 12-1, the worksheet from 12-1.
Updated town operating revenues?
Town operations, yes.
Town operations.
So instead of 6306, it's 6206, right?
Well, though, what I'll say is that, assuming that the Gerdas gets approved, then it is 6306. Because we don't have a separate line item in this for...
Not in revenues.
So we should, so it's 6306.
It's probably going to be 6306.
Education tax accrual adjustment, we don't know.
No, you don't do, that's not a budget that I know.
Delinquent taxes?
We don't do that.
We don't do that. And then penalties, we have 1,000. Interest on taxes, 1,000.
Uh, yeah, I think that's basically 8%, and after May 1st, 8%, say, we had $26,000.
Well, 8% is penalties, it's, it's pretty okay.
Yeah, that could be where we find some money.
The whole harmless is, 1,000 is a little bit higher, but that's, we have had people put more less into the revenue, so I think that's fair.
So that's a current use for harmless, okay, so that's why you went up 200 dollars.
We talked through that, and we felt that was fair.
Yeah, sight for farsell, 300. US deconti funds, 100. Civil fines, we don't budget for, listers, education grants. We don't budget for, and we get that money from the state. And then 80% recording, 4,500, which is down 300. And dog license fees, down $60, 300 of 500.
Why is that a 406?
Next page.
We don't budget for fishing and hunting licenses.
Anymore, no.
$900 is budgeted for copy work?
Yep.
Which is down from the other previous year. Marriages are down, no, marriages, $30. Debt certificates, it's not budgeted for restoration.
Is, okay, so yeah, I made a correction there, because it's, it's 20% of the total clerk fees, and we had calculated it wrong.
Well, it's $2,000 every $10 that we get.
Yeah, it's 20%. So, um, when we budgeted clerk fees at 4,500, you have to gross it up. So, the, the right 20% is, you're saying that 1125 is 20% of the total, which would include 1125 plus 4,500? Orky-dokey?
So we ended up, so we're at 1125.
Six hundred pages, I do six hundred pages, $10, six grand.
And the other ones we don't budget for?
It's probably a little low, but...
Uh, well, it depends, you know?
Depends, depends.
You know, Green Mountain indexes and so forth.
Yeah, it could be up, but rule of thumb, be conservative with revenues.
Okay, so this page, interest, 10, so then we go to page three, which is town operating
And here we have lots, lots of links for what to do about everyone's compensation.
Yeah.
But I will tell you, I really think we're, as far as the town treasurer, I'm, I'm completely hunky-dory at where I'm at.
I'm looking for 50% raise, well, it's not like a whole wish, but...
Is it 50%? Is it for the last?
No, I think...
For any of this last?
Right, the reality, I mean, what we discussed last time, is that we really need to know where we're at, and what flexibility we may now have.
I agree, so we'll skip that.
We were going to ask her about, where are the monies, if we had the monies for the two grants?
Right.
To bring back, make sure that we're...
I would suggest we get through the rest of the...
I looked into, for, for, for what...
For the self...
The salt shed grant, I looked into that, and what I determined was...
And I suggest, before we get into a protracted conversation about this, can we go through the rest of the determined numbers on Fund I?
Yes.
And we'll come back to that.
Okay. So payroll service fees are about the same?
Yeah, so we kept that.
We kept that. Payroll taxes are going to be determined by, by the salaries, by the wages. Going on to the next page, supply and postage, we had 4,000.
That's good, yeah.
1,200 for town report expense.
Yep.
And I put in 500 for the planning commission, because I talked to Barbara Lorne, and so that's in, I don't, that's in your copies too?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
And that's the abatement.
Legal notices, we have 800, some, everything else is the same except for...
We dropped electric a little bit.
We dropped electric at the church to 950.
And we upped the computer maintenance.
We upped computer maintenance by 300.
Yep.
And fire...
Fire alarm by 190. We dropped legal services by 1,500.
Oh, rescue, now.
Rescue services, we got the number.
What did we get, the number from?
I have written down that we had gotten correspondence from Gary...
Yes.
LaLornea, that the number was going to be 15,173 and 90 cents.
Is that for the fire department, or for rescue services? The mutual aid fees?
No, no, it's not mutual aid, we got an email from Gary LaLornea with mutual aid that was something else.
This is rescue, isn't it?
Because don't confuse the two, there's rescue services...
Right.
I'm not confusing anything, I'm stating what we discussed and decided at last meeting.
Okay, good, 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 good.
Whether that was wrong, I guess is...
No, no, they're fine.
...upward debate, but...
He's, he's affiliated with rescue services? That's what I'm asking.
Well, I guess my second question was, we wrote it down because we had just been gotten, I would assume that we get notified in some other way than Gary sending us an email, so...
Yeah, somebody has to call rescue services and see if they've done their budget.
No, resc, rescue services send us an invoice, and I thought they sent us with the latest based upon our population and how many dollars per person, I thought we received that in the mail.
Yeah, because I...
Maybe it was where the 15,173 came from, because that wouldn't be Gary LaLornea, that's why I'm confused.
No, Gary LaLornea is, the next page was the fire department.
The 15,173 had to come from someone, come from rescue services?
Right, this was, that 14,734 must be a figure we got in...
That was from last year. 14,734, we got in writing last year.
Yeah.
The 15,173...
It's just conservatively, we don't know where the number came from, though.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I know we already had them, but...
Oh, then we must, well, then you must...
Where did it come from?
I came in a mess.
Usually, usually I get the budget, when I, when I'm here, I take it, they stick it in a budget folder, but I don't have it, so I don't know where it came from, either. So, when you find it...
What number did you have, you had 15,1...
15,173.
50 and 90 cents, we all have that number, right?
173.11.
I do recall it, I just wrote it down there.
Yeah, that's got to be rescue. And then the fire department's a separate...
Somebody just said to look for the correspondence.
Because the department has, they have like $18,000, 9,000 is a new one, that's the mutual, I mean, they have mutual, and then this is what we always gave them, every year, 9,000 or something.
Mutual aid is 800.
Well, I'm just wondering, because our 15...
Wait, this year went up?
Yeah.
So they're saying 15,173, which is...
I, where would that correspondence be? I know I read it, because you commented on it.
Well, I'll check with, we'll check with Louise, she may have...
Louise doesn't have it, if she had it, we have it.
Well, then we'll call rescue.
Or, or, or she put it in that notebook, which wouldn't, but it's not an appropriation, so...
No, it's not.
It's a bill. So, it's a bill.
It could have been in this place.
Yeah. It's on somewhere, not here.
Okay, and then the fire department mutual aid dues, that was something that we...
That we got from Gary LaLornea, that's...
Yeah, that's what we got from Gary.
And the 9,000, we got a letter...
Yeah.
From Greg, whoever writes the letter, that heard, yeah. And that I know is in the notebook.
So this page went down, copies, 400.
Yeah.
Contract, 1350, we're on this page now.
Yeah.
Yep.
800 for maintenance, 600 for recycling trash removal, 1612 for VLTC dues, 1196 for Brooklyn regional dues. Nemets software increased $100 to 2100. We reduced the landfill fees, oh, that was the landfill fees here.
Five grand.
We have here 5,000, we got something in the mail, it says, the base assessment for fiscal year 18, no, fiscal year would be 19, right? There were a few more. Fiscal year 19 for Brooklyn would be 4,612 and 19 cents.
So we can make that 4,612.
Well, here's the thing I'll say, just to keep in mind that that has not been approved.
Voted on.
It will, it's highly unlikely that anything would change about it, but we're going to vote it on January 4th, but it could, there was a, there's a public review.
Should we round up?
I was thinking we would put it in, we would budget it at 4750.
Okay.
So there's a little bit of...
Cushion? That makes sense to me?
That's good, yeah.
So that's down 4750.
Definitely correct. All right, recycling costs, we had budgeted 11,000 last year, it says here, discussions continue. This is something that we wanted to bring to this...
Last year, that was an article that we had on the town meeting, and maybe...
We don't have to do another article again, unless you want to. I think...
Well, and I think we need to...
Review it.
I think we need to review it more closely than we have so far, to make sure, right now, or quite frankly, as late as we can possibly do it, to try to definitely analyze what the costs are.
Well, the latest you can do it is before, so here's what happens, is this has to go into the report that gets published.
Yeah, no, I agree with that.
Yeah, so I don't know what the latest...
I'm just saying, I don't know that...
We can let it go for, for another month, probably, and just, but I, I would at least put it in for...
January 3rd, I think you need to have it for January 3rd meeting.
Well, so do we know what the...
What the numbers are.
What the numbers are?
You, you got your number of financials, so you can look at what they were, what they are today, and then do a...
Do we have a printout for financials?
I have, oh, I have one printout, one printout right here.
With the bottom line, again, when we appropriated that 11,000, it was predicated on us renting the bins from the vendor. We haven't had to do that, so consequently, our fees, you know, this number should be a little lower this year, because we didn't have to rent.
So I guess the larger question, and maybe we don't want to get sidetracked by this at the moment, although it's being decided, is, do we want a budget for that? Do we want to just flat out budget for it? Or, I know we don't have to, but do we want to warn a special article again to get...
Do we want to continue? Do we want to continue in his vein?
Right, and appropriate...
Because the other option was...
Up to 11 again, or if we think the number should be different.
I thought we just...
The other option is to let, again, the other option was that the townspeople can just recycle themselves, take it upon, you know, their responsibility.
Well, and see if we want to continue as is, or go back to another, to do...
Right, because like Putney and Newfane, that, they, they have put the onus on the owners of the property to make their own decision about...
And their, their population are very unhappy.
They are.
And Lucky, by the way, is going to end up doing this. They're almost certainly going to... They're almost certainly going to. New Fane, I don't know, but they're, they're going to end up.
I have people who have come in unhappy about taxes who are very happy that we've continued to recycle.
Oh, yeah, this is, it's a small amount.
So I guess I am. Decision is more, do we budget, do we just flat out budget for it? Or do we warn another article and give people another opportunity to vote?
So Mara, you said some financials with the total amount we've spent so far.
Well, I, I did an annualization for you a while ago and I can do another one and email it out.
Yeah, the way that we have.
My address is, I'm not emailing anything on Monday. But I can, I will be in tomorrow afternoon. So I could email it out to you tomorrow afternoon. This page, um, find the landfill costs line and tell me what it is.
I, I don't know where to.
What font is in Fund One?
Here, it's Fund One.
September, October, November.
Fund One, general fund.
Four, six months, October, November, these two months. So.
That should be a fairly reasonable.
That's my wife. So we spent X amount of.
It's not in the balance sheet.
Double it and add with me what I have, what I've said.
And it's toward the end. Landfill fees.
Where are we? Oh, what happened?
Landfill fee, recycling collection. So far, through the end of November, we've spent 3, 3,692.64.
3,6, what was that? 3,6, what period is that?
It's period five. So here's what you do. Who has a calculator?
I do.
Take 3,693.
Yep.
Divided by four.
Yep.
Multiplied by 12.
11,079.
Pretty close to the other one.
On an annualized basis.
For 79.
$11,000 looks like the right number.
Okay. Now, do you see any change in us having the dumpsters being available or you think that will.
You mean where?
So dumpsters, in other words, if we keep this number at 11,000, is that predicated on the same deal that we're going to be able to have those dumpsters without wrecking them?
I can't, I, I don't envision a scenario where, in the near future, where we're going to have to give those dumpsters back.
Or that we have to rent them?
Or, well, we would only have to give them back if, we would only have to rent them if we had to give those dumpsters back. And I don't envision that happening.
Okay, so you feel happy with that? You're, you're good with that?
Yeah, I mean, as much as anyone can predict anything.
Well, then 11,000 seems to be a pretty solid number.
So, yeah.
Okay, so we'll change it.
Okay, so let's leave it for now and we can separate that discussion.
You can have a discussion of whether you want, you know, whether you want to warn.
So the next one was law enforcement and we have a contract not to exceed 3,600.
Do you want to make a quick point?
Yeah.
I have a feeling what's going to happen here is that it'll come up at town meeting in our business. So I don't think we have to warn it. We spent 11,000 this year. I mean, with all the interchange that you says you're getting from people coming in, I wouldn't be surprised if somebody brings it up at town meeting.
Yeah.
So warning it. This is purposeful.
You guys, yeah, you guys can decide. Those are your warnings. You guys get to warn them.
All right, so now continuing law enforcement, our contract not to exceed 3,600, which seems to be. That's standard. That's been working.
Did we get any increase from the state police in regards to man hour cost? I don't know, see it.
That only comes in, that comes in, that comes in in like May or June for the July contract.
Okay, well, it was at one time, we were doing a six month contract, then I decided to do a year contract, so.
Right.
I'm just curious if that changed.
But it's a $63 overtime hourly rate. I think that was the number.
Insurance, oh, I'm sorry, that's, that's Mara's department.
And I put in what, based on this year's invoice. Um, we did get a little, we just got our, you'll see it in the warrant. We just got our invoice and it went down slightly, which was a surprise.
You think?
So, but not by enough to fiddle with the budget.
Okay.
So 5,900 for that?
I would leave it at 5,900.
We did increase the cemeteries in order to get those, some of those caught up to $2,000.
So we're going to do that kind of on a yearly basis until it gets caught up?
Until it gets caught up.
I mean, figure how much we need.
Maybe two years, maybe.
Okay.
I, I would think we should be able to do that in two years, get it all caught up. Um, county tax, we don't, but, right?
No.
County tax, we're waiting on.
Yeah, until Ms. Patterson sends us a little.
We needed some expense for animal empowerment. We're keeping that at 250. Audit reserve.
That I.
That was something you did, yeah.
That's, so basically, you know, what I said is I thought we should start setting aside a reserve for an outside audit to happen once every four years. Because our darling auditors, although they meanwhile, are not experienced auditors. So at some point, if I decide I'm going to retire, or if the. Yeah, they, they could come. And, or if, you know, it just might be a good thing to have a reserve set aside. Or, you know, someone new comes in and they say, I want the books audited before I, you know, take on the task of managing the money, which I should have said. But, um, the, you know, I think, but what I would like to say before we put in 2,000, we have to warn it as a separate article anyway. So probably we should warn it as a separate article and not just drop it in the line item.
Okay.
Yeah, we put it in, so it's going to be a separate warning. And I'm going to put it in after, when I take this, this worksheet links up to a tax estimate worksheet. You guys, some of you guys have seen it. Well, you've seen it if you've looked at the town report. So all these numbers plug in and it tells, you know, what's it doing to our taxes compared to the year before.
All right, so we'll continue on, leave that for a more article.
So I'm going to put a zero now and we'll warn it as a separate article.
The only thing.
If we don't have any other.
Is the county tax, I think you should plug in some sort of number there because it's going to be somewhere closer to that 53, 5400.
We could keep it flat.
Yeah, I would, I would do that because I know it's going to be pretty close to that.
Do we have a sense of when we, when they tell us that number?
It's pretty late. Usually I'm.
The end of December or January?
Beginning of January, I think.
So we assume, we assume 54 for now.
Yeah. Okay. And fire permit, you're saying $50, that's pretty standard, no change in there. Okay, any questions on this page?
So I'll update this and send you all updated ones tomorrow.
Next page.
But, uh, Mark, the question on the highway, salt check. I have to do, I'm going to do a rolling cash flow to guard with the cash.
Rescue thing.
I talked to Neil Stute.
Yeah, did we? All right, so that works. So that was.
Bar is a money.
15, 15, 15.
I don't know how to have a number for it. I want to make sure that.
Dollars.
I'm on it.
Where.
I'm on it.
Okay.
But that's only that was left, right?
Rather than go. If I can have everybody's attention. We're going to, at this point.